Jerry should be here in ten, fifteen minutes.
Oh, so he talked to you, he's gonna be here.
Why are you sending a text?
He's definitely late.
Fifteen minutes late, so, but I don't think we need to wait.
We do not, we do not, we have three, so, okay. I am going to start the meeting, we're having a... Oh, Ashley, do you have the agenda, copy of the agenda?
I don't have an agenda.
Usually we have one for the meeting and usually it's just here.
I thought it was just a workshop, I didn't know there was anything formal on the agenda.
It is, Carly made us an agenda. Okay, I can, we can go without it, Carly didn't leave it here, that's fine. So we're having a...
When I read it to you, I could read it off.
It's fine. Of open quorum, close up. So, this is a special meeting that we're having to kick off our ordinance review process for the planning board of Bath. My name is Carly Estabrock, I am the chair. We have...
Jim Williams.
Jim Williams, who's a member.
Jamie Wallace.
Jamie Wallace, we have three members here, so we do have a forum, so we are allowed to meet. We have our consultant, Max Johnstone, here, from MCOG, M-C-O-G, who's going to be assisting us with this endeavor. He also helped the town with the comprehensive plan. So, that worked out really well, and that's in review right now, so now we're gonna start the ordinances. I was hoping to keep this meeting sort of general and overview, to sort of give you information, Max, so that we can all kind of disseminate what we've got. I know that we sort of had a meeting like this two years ago, when you came on, and then the comp plan started, and we decided not to do both at the same time, thank goodness, because it doesn't make sense, and so now we're starting this. So, if that works for everybody, is that okay? And I figured, we have our information, so I made copies. This is the list that we had two years ago, that we put together. Can you give one to Christine, and a second one to Christine for... Christine, if you could give that to Carly and have her put it on the website, because Sally said that we should be sharing all these things that we're doing.
Yes, I know.
So, this list is not a complete list, because I think we're gonna add more to it. This was the one that we created, actually, more than two years ago. And I think you had it come before too, but...
It's always good to have an update.
Yeah, so we kind of pulled these things together, it says on it which ordinance it is, whether it's land use or the development review. Some of them have the section number for reference. Some of them have the origin, like whose idea it was, in case the issue and the suggested action after that didn't make sense, you could refer back to the person that put it on there. I think we... The only person that isn't on the board anymore is Jeremy. Well, I'm sorry, he is an alternate on the board. And we can still reach out to him, he's not like moved out state or anything, if it's not understood what that is. So we have this list. I also have... We put together ordinance changes, I don't know, three years ago, maybe three and a half years ago, and we had seven of them, and six of them have gone through. The seventh one, which is actually strangely number six, is here. It is a change, and you have this too, I think, at one point.
Yeah, I remember this.
Jamie doesn't have it though. It's a change to the section in the development review ordinance to... Suzanne, do you mind giving that to Christine? And also Christine, I... Well, I don't know if that one really needs to go on the site yet, but... This is to revise the section Article 12, the site plan review applications. It's very vague, it's not comprehensive of all the different things that need to be done, need to be provided. So, we went through and took a stab at adding a bunch of language in here that makes the process flow a lot like the subdivision review does, because they're very similar, it's just ones for subdivision and ones for a site. So, that's what we did. The blue markings that you see on the sheet, those are comments from town attorney Sally Jaggett. So those are her comments back to us, we sent it to Leo.
Okay.
Yeah. So, those are her comments. We didn't do anything with it after that, because we were told to hold off, which is fine. So, that's there. So you have a list, you have this ordinance change number six, which is the site plan. And then... Does... Do any of the other members have any items that probably aren't on this list? That, I mean, we've come up with stuff in the last two years. So there's probably things that aren't on this list that you might have in mind, that you would want to do. And you don't have to come up with it today, unless it's right on the top of your mind. But I think if you go through and come up with some, make a list, we can give them to Max at the next meeting, when we do that. Because I know, I read inside my book all the time, and I have some in my book that didn't make it into this list that I need to write down still, so...
Only thing that doesn't jump around, I'm just trying to commit a conforming DEP chapter in the 1000, and we've been talking about it all the time.
Right, I think that's on here, isn't it? I think it was in the list.
Well, I looked quickly, I didn't see it, but it should be.
Jeremy had this contractor deincertification required on projects in shoreline zone.
Oh, God. Maybe it didn't make it to the rest of...
Reorganize ordinance, there is a shoreline section, and I actually was gonna talk about that.
Right, so, right, so there is that. There were other things to... Sorry, to reach each other's speed.
Yeah.
We're just setting up, this is the stuff that we did two, three years ago, remember?
Yeah.
And I just gave you copies for everybody, give it to Max again.
Okay.
And then, what we should do as members, probably, if we've come up with anything written in the book or whatever in the last couple of years since that list was made, to kind of make that known the next time that we meet with Max.
Yeah.
And then we'll have like a complete overall thing. The other thing, I think, that we were looking for you to do, Max, is to compare, like Jim just said, we know that there are a lot of state items that are missing out of the book, that didn't get put in over the years. So we need to have you point out any of the state items missing or conflicts with the state statutes that are updated and this book has not. And then there's comparing the comp plan and the ordinances, which is kind of the same as the state stuff, because I know in the comp plan there were a lot of state items that we had to put in the comp plan that then have to be inside of the ordinance.
Yeah.
To sort of compare it, to see what things we don't have in the ordinance that should be in the ordinance. And I don't know if we want to attack like all of the wish lists, and if we need to attack the state mandated stuff first. Right, or...
Yeah, I guess it depends on everyone's timelines. I mean, LD 2003, for example, that is something that you'd have to have by next summer. I don't know where you guys are at with that. I remember giving my notes a while ago, but I don't know if you wanted to just have that approved in your ordinance now, and then meanwhile I'm working on everything else, or...
What's the date?
That's a good point.
Would you have that by?
That's...
July, you have to have it approved by July 1st of next year.
So it has to be in whatever, yeah, that gets me to the whole phasing thing. I mean, once we wrap our heads around this, and you come up with a plan of how we should proceed, I think we have to figure out phasing. I don't think we're gonna get all this done before an April deadline for May meeting. And sometimes it's March deadline, or April 1st deadline, and so I think we need to prioritize and do a little bit of a phasing here.
And I think with the comp plan, Christine, what was the date? I think January is when we're expected to hear back from the state with their...
Yes.
We're expected to hear from January, early January, when the state's done with their comp plan review, and then whatever they give us for the notes, we implement the comp plan for me to implement them, then do the public hearing, and you might be able to have like a March meeting if you want, to go over the comp plan items or any type of...
Right.
But yeah, meanwhile, you should probably just get LD 2003 into what you have now for an ordinance.
So first, probably.
Yeah, and then whatever the overall overhaul is going to be, the post-comp plan one, that'll just take your LD 2003 in this ordinance and just move it over. So, it's good to have LD 2003 done first.
Right, so LD 2003, and then all the other overhauls, really?
Yeah, because the 2003 is really the only big timeline we're dealing with.
Okay. And then you can tell us whether you think some of the overhauls can be done for the June, May meeting, is it May or June this year?
If you don't know, you can come back and review it, and then decide to... I would say May, June, I don't know.
So the town meeting, whether that's May or June, we might be able to fit some other things in there, depending on how often's a...
It would make sense to pile whatever we can in that moment to...
I don't disagree, but it's still, it's a lot. And you guys are almost over 2004 here, didn't you finish that?
I gave my notes, I don't know what happened after that.
We didn't do anything with it because it didn't have to be incorporated, so...
It hasn't got a attorney.
It hasn't... That's, I don't know, that's a question for Christine, that wouldn't be the planning board, that would be the town staff.
But do we, I thought it was completed to send the attorney for review, was that not the last?
I believe so, you'd have to ask Carly, I think she was in charge of that.
But wasn't that, there's been a bunch of legislative changes since then.
Right.
Wasn't there another statute?
There was like, I think it was 1786 order, which gave you a one-year extension, and then there was one minor change in the shoreline, so I'm not aware of any other LD 2003 changes. In fact, I was at a conference just this morning where Drummond Woodsman, who's involved with helping towns with LD 2003, going over this very thing, they hadn't heard anything.
Right, so Christine, do you know where that's at? Did it go to Sally to legal?
No, I don't know, I wasn't directed to send it to Sally yet, so I haven't sent it there. But we certainly could.
I don't understand who would not or direct you.
This might be more of a question later on, I don't want to take up too much time going back to what was done.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't involved at the time, so I didn't know it was ready or that it should be sent to legal. I didn't know that.
Okay, so it goes back to Carly then, which she's got to...
So we're just talking generally, Alice.
We are, yeah.
Okay. So, are we going to take our existing, I mean, I just would like to have an overview of how we're gonna go at this. Are we going to, you know, are we gonna, you know, make tweak our existing ordinance, make a whole bunch of little changes? Are we gonna try and reorganize it? I mean, and I'm interested in your perspective, frankly, and how, with the best ways to go at this.
That's great, that was my next thing, is the format, was to ask him about the format and how he wanted to proceed with that, because you've been doing that with other towns. So now we've got info out there, what do you...
So obviously getting all these state items is gonna be one of the top priorities. For the shoreline zone revision that you just brought up, I was talking with Christine about this, that's actually kind of funny timing, because I'm also being contracted with Bath to help with their shoreline zone updates as well, so it'll be a chance for me to actually give a shoreline zone recommendation that kind of fits both of your communities, that actually sort something that will have very similar language. Obviously, I'd run it past you, so it's not as if, it's more of talking about the setbacks and like wetlands and some water bodies that cross the boundaries to make sure it's consistent alongside, because it doesn't make sense if you're more strict than Bath is, or...
Well, the language in Chapter 1000 is the same, whether it's used in Bath.
Right.
We're gonna be using the DEP language a lot of it.
And we share our water with Pittsburgh, not Bath.
What about some of the ponds and the streams that are right around the east side right here?
Milk, there's a couple of those.
Okay, so yeah, so some of it's Pittsburgh, some of it's Bath, yeah?
Right.
A few, so...
That's a relatively too far behind.
Good timing.
And yes, while it is mostly gonna be Chapter 1000, some towns are giving some degrees to be a bit more strict, or have a different language. Like, there's one town that has, I think it's Bodenham, they have the, they have the kind of, consider it's a great pond, so it has those additional standards tightly, and that was a decision that town decided to make. Most of the setback requirements are for 75, can't build within 75 with LAR, but some towns are going to 100, some even 150. Again, it's something where I wanted to see what everyone has, because it would make sense to be a bit more consistent, especially some of these boundary watersheds. If you decide you want to have yours in a resource protection, but on the other side of it, Bath or Pittsburgh says, well, no, ours is gonna be limited residential or general development, well, you're being a bit more strict, and everyone's just gonna flip over to Bath or Pittsburgh, or vice versa. So, I want to just look at it from what's happening with your neighbors as well, so that it's something of a rock system.
What was the one change that they changed in LD 2003 in the shoreline, do you know what the topic is?
It's a minor change, but it's more for clarity. For accessory dwelling units, they had some language in the original LD 2003 that said accessory dwelling units are not applicable to shoreline, or... It was like accessory dwelling units still have to follow shoreline zoning standards by municipal or the state standards. So it raised two different questions. Does that mean it's prohibited? Because if you look at Chapter 1000, it doesn't say anything about accessory dwelling units, so does that mean it's prohibited? Or just mean it's supposed to be in there, but still follow these things? So the minor change was just saying towns have to allow accessory dwelling units, but it still has to follow all the standards. So, outside the shoreline, an accessory dwelling unit happens wherever a single-family house is built, and you don't apply the minimum lot size, you have it right in front of you, actually. So, whatever is a minimum lot size outside the shoreline zone, an acre, two acres, two acres.
Two or three.
So, you have your single-family home on a two-acre lot, you can still build an accessory dwelling unit without that additional two acres, but if you're in the shoreline zone now, you have to have the two acres for the single-family, plus the two acres for the accessory dwelling, but that's only in the shoreline zone. So that's the...
So you have to have twice the lot size in the shoreline?
For an accessory dwelling unit, and you have to permit it where single families are allowed as well. That's the change they made.
So as far as format, I think if we're talking about LD 2003, because you talked before about changing the whole numbering system and all that kind of stuff when we talked two years ago, but I think if we're changing just LD 2000, putting just LD 2003 in there first, we kind of leave it, slide that in, and then when the overhaul happens, is it gonna end up being
It would change.
a completely new document that's going to the town to have... Because usually we have, this section has got four extra words and that kind of thing. It's not gonna be like that, it's gonna be like the whole document probably going to the town for approval. Was that your question, really? More?
Well, yes, it's part of it. You know, I just, I looked at Max to take the lead, really, to, you know, how, you know, we're gonna go at it, 2003, we've got a deadline, we need to deal with that right in the front, but... I mean, if we're gonna rewrite the whole ordinance, you know, then that's a huge task. If we're gonna just tweak it here and there, you know, for our sheet, that's...
Well...
You know, and I frankly hate our ordinance.
Okay.
I mean, it's hard, it's this, you've gotta, it's hard to, you know, to know it, how it affects things, you've gotta, there's all these exceptions and footnotes, it's not easy to understand. And the easier it is to understand, I think, the easier our job will be in the code enforcement office shop. So, I just wanted to know what your thoughts are, I mean, should we do a complete rewrite? Or should we be just looking at some review?
So that's part of why I like to do these sessions now, because I do want to hear from the planning board, some comments like that. If you don't like this ordinance, it doesn't make sense to try and preserve it as it is.
Well, I'm just one person.
Well, that's true, but I'm saying I want to hear from the planning board first, I'm gonna hear from the code enforcement officer. If there's some applicants who are willing to talk about this, recent, or ones from a few years ago who are willing to talk about it, or any residents willing to talk about it, that's why we kind of had that in the survey, for people to voice their thoughts on it. And it's going to be a lot of diverse opinions, it's going to be from different perspectives, but if people can agree on certain items, like it doesn't make sense that this is here and that's not here, then we can at least start with common graph items.
I mean, I agree with Jim, there's definitely, it's spotty, not spotty, but it has like pockets, and then you're in this section, but then you've got to come back to a three sections to find something. So it needs a serious rearrange, I think, you know? And so should we have the CEO here at the next meeting? I didn't know if...
I don't think it's necessary.
Do you want to get his feedback, or?
I was gonna say...
Yeah, I think that'd be very fun, to have his feedback in all of this, because she's dealing with it daily.
Right, and I don't mind meeting with them out, like privately outside of this meeting, I don't...
Oh, okay, right.
Yeah, you guys don't need to...
Yeah, I just didn't know if we should invite him next time, that's all. If you're gonna talk to him suddenly, that's fine too.
Yeah, that way I...
Well, I'd get, it'd be interesting to hear his perspective, Sally. Not that he needs another meeting to go to, but if he was here at that meeting, I mean, I just, I'm very interested in what, you know, how we can adapt this to make his job easier, for one thing.
If he's fine coming to a planning board meeting, I don't mind doing that either, then it can be recorded, and we have his notes. I'm gonna offer to just meet with him privately, just so there's more flexibility with meeting him almost at any time.
Okay.
But I am gonna keep that in touch on it, obviously.
Christine, what do you think?
I think either way is fine, I certainly understand Jim's perspective, where, you know, it would be helpful for the planning board to hear firsthand from John, what his thoughts are about the ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, anytime you've even come up with this list, some of these things on here are from him, so we've always tried to include definitely the CEO, if you have...
Right, so if you have any questions about what he may answer, what he's trying to accomplish, that it's suggesting a change, it would be helpful to have up here.
Yeah, and I mean, even ongoing meetings, when we're discussing certain, discussing certain sections or things that, you know, we really need some put on.
And I will also talk with the town, I also usually talk with the town staff, since sometimes they've been here for a long, they've dealt with it, or have experience in some other planning board items, and I might get some perspective from these select board as well, just, again, they might hear some things that don't always get to the planning board, so while we should watch, just check in with them. Also, they're the ones who are gonna have to end up getting to a town meeting, so I don't want, I don't want them to be angry with me about an ordinance, I suppose.
No, they always review it all anyway before it goes, but, okay?
Just, well, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just gonna go to meeting frequency, but if you have more to talk about with format and stuff, go for it. All I have left is like meeting frequency, so...
I did just want to ask one question, just because we're on the topic of like reorganizing. You have like the land use ordinance and the development review ordinance, and then there's an article for shoreline zone, one for subdivision, one for, I thought there was something else in here.
Site plan.
Site plan. Are we trying to keep it all under one ordinance? Or are we trying to have like individual ordinances, like a dedicated ordinance for shoreline zone, a dedicated ordinance for subdivision, or one land use ordinance that has an article specifically for your site plan review process, an article specifically for subdivision, and so on? Like, I can show you what I've done for Waldaborough, and that's the one I've kind of done with...
Like, separating them into different books, kind of thing?
Well, like...
Or just different sections? Because I think we like, we talked about this before, and you guys chimed in, but we like one book, whether it has lots of different sections, and they're divided up by whether it's site or subdivision or whatever, but I don't want to have to have more than one book, right?
How is Waldaborough organized?
Well, Waldaborough is organized in sort of the one book, except the floodplain, we took that one out, so that if there's FEMA changes, we don't have to go through a planning board process to update it. But one of the reasons I ask this is because you have land use ordinance and development review ordinance, is that, are those technically two different ordinances? Or am I trying to have the development review ordinance combined into land use?
They're, well, they're not, I don't think they're different, they just have different information in them. You know, the first one's just the zoning and the different use tables, and then the land use standards, and then the development review is really subdivision and site plan, and then it has like the road, road requirements, road design, parking, that sort of thing, so it's... I don't think it has to be two different things, really, it's, but I think they need to keep as different sections, and I'm not sure when it actually ended up being two different things like this.
Then I would probably make them like different parts, but... The land use ordinance, this is my vision, the land use ordinance is the overall book you're gonna have, that's the actual title on it. And development or site review, whatever the term is called you do call it, that would be the title of the article for it. In Waldaborough, first article is just the purpose, general statements, you know, gotta get the administrative stuff out of the way. Second one is just outlining the responsibilities for each of the, for each of the groups, like what the code enforcement officer deals with, what the planning board deals with, what the appeals deals with, get everyone's responsibilities out of the way. And then Article 3 is the site plan review, Article 4 is, and we can always change around the articles that we prefer. But everything would be an article in both land use ordinance.
Yeah, it would make it less confusing.
And, but you, they can have floodplain outside of that, which, so that you could update it without a review.
Right, because if the federal government comes in and says, these are the federal standards we're applying, I don't know how, and it's the bare minimum that we're asking towns to do. Well, it's like the shoreline zone, that was just brought up in Chapter 1000, you guys probably aren't gonna be getting more restrictive than how FEMA's gonna do things. You might, and if that's the case, that's probably a bigger discussion to have.
I don't even, it's an interesting concept, but I don't know how it would affect what you're trying to do. I don't know, and then who actually oversees that? Is that a planning board thing, or is that a selectman?
Of course, yeah.
The jurisdiction as far, as far as changes and that sort of thing.
If there's a change...
And how they're implemented.
Right, I mean, how, who implements it, and that.
That's really a big question, is how is it implemented?
Yeah, I mean, the authority over it.
It's an ordinance, so the town meeting still needs to come on.
Right, but with the land use ordinance, you all have to have your public hearings, you have to have your review of it, whereas if it's a floodplain ordinance, being separate from the land use ordinance, you're not updating it unless FEMA makes some changes to it. You'd get that note from NMA or from anyone, this is the same standard you have, it's just changing these words, unless the select board really has an issue, they'd just say, we're gonna adopt what the title agreement has.
And that would have to be voted in at a town meeting?
It would have to be voted in at a town meeting. But rather than going through the planning board public hearing process like you would with the land use ordinance, you would just get whatever changes are happening, and would go to a town meeting, Y or A to approve the changes.
You still have to do hearings for the, I don't know.
Right, it'd still go through the regular warrant hearing process.
I don't think we have a whole lot of floodplain in town anyway.
But you could also tag it with a glossary, so you're gonna add words.
You could.
Because those are updated glossaries, and so...
So do you have any, the Waldaborough example maybe that you could share for next time, or?
Yeah, and I have the...
This is super long, probably?
The document itself is 232 pages. Okay, good, you, I've seen your...
The table, the table of contents?
Yes, it does...
Can you share the table of contents with us maybe for next time?
Yeah, and if you want, you can take a quick look at the...
Or does anyone want like the whole book to look at?
It's available online as well.
Jim does.
We can look at it online, right?
At some point, I'd like to look at it.
Is it online right now, and will it, oh, it's been enacted, okay?
It's under the ordinance change.
But back to the floodplain, just for a minute, if we can.
Yes.
Are the decisions that the planning board is gonna have to make in regards to floodplain, floodplain issues?
There are still some applicants who require going through the floodplain process, like...
So with the plan, I mean, I can't recall ever having to deal with a floodplain issue as a planning board.
Right.
I mean, if we, if the, if there is laws and so forth in place that, where the planning board should be reviewing some of these issues, then I'd say, well, maybe it should be part of our ordinance. But if we are dealing with those issues, then... But if we are dealing with those issues, then we don't need, it doesn't need.
Yeah, because we haven't, we haven't, um, because every time someone comes in, CEO is supposed to look to see if they're on the floodplain map.
Yes.
And I know, I've looked at it in the past, and there's barely anywhere in town that's on the floodplain map, because everything's on a rock, so I mean, if you're seventy-five feet back, you're up high and you're not really in a floodplain.
Yeah.
So, I don't remember anyone ever having to deal with the floodplain at all, do you? All the years we've been on?
I, I, I recall.
Because I think John's always checked him and said, no, it's not the floodplain, so.
If a planning board ever dealing with any issues around a floodplain.
So.
I mean, are there exceptions to, if, if you're within a floodplain, can you build if you do certain things, I mean, are, are we gonna have to build, like put it on stilts or something, or, I mean, are, are we gonna have to deal with those kind of things?
Well, I'd have to look at the floodplain ordinance, but usually it's, um, something that the code enforcement officer deals with. Uh, and if they feel it should, it would benefit from a pub- public hearing, then it would give planning board review. But if you haven't been dealing with it now, you might not be dealing with it anytime soon either.
I don't.
But that's just, it's just one item compared to everything else, um, and that's just one ordinance that I'm saying could be set in it out. The shoreline zone is another item that you could have it as its own separate one, because that's more of an overlay district, um, or subdivision, if you wanna just keep that separate, so that you don't have subdivision, site plan being confused. It's, it's, it's all things are coming up now that there are different options for how you can go about this.
Yeah.
You guys want something that's a lot more clear and easier to read? That's what everyone always wants, it's always a matter of what that end product looks like.
Right.
Some people think it's all one document, some think it's having three or four different documents, so that the person reading one ordinance knows it's under that ordinance, rather than this ordinance goes to that and then that.
As a, as a note, as a note under powers and duties, no one in here, it's not listed. Floodplain is not listed for either planning board or court enforcement. Shoreland is, but not floodplain.
The floodplain might, the floodplain might already be a, I assume it's already an ordinance in this town, it's probably just already separate.
Okay. Alright.
Um. And then, I don't know, is the board of appeals very active group, does it see a lot of?
Saw like one appeal in the last four years that I know of.
Occasionally, you know.
Occasionally, but not often.
Okay.
Um.
Um, it would be helpful, I think, to have it readily available to the applicants, so that they know what their options are, if they are happy with what the planning board has done.
To have what readily available?
Being aware of the appeal process?
Right.
Okay. I mean, I'd, I'd be more of a, a document you'd hand out when you've done your findings, facts or conclusions.
But in our ordinance now, there is something about board of appeals and so forth.
There is.
Yes.
There is.
They're sixty-four.
It outlines exactly what they need to do.
And that would be another thing, uh, just. Usually when I'm doing the ordinance revision, I'll have it all typed up, all cleaned up, moving, and then we'd go through it similar to the comp plan. Section or article by section, article, so one night, I hope we can just go through article one, make sure it's all pretty, you all like how it looks, and then do that pretty much for every article or section. And the first few ones that are more of the, the background and the housekeeping items, we try and get two or three of those done at one meeting, because unless there's some weird structure going on here where you don't like hearing how the planning board responsibilities are, then it's not gonna take too much time, really. It's the site plan and board who are probably gonna take a little bit longer time.
So, just as an example, kind of moving forward with the, with the LD two thousand, where we should figure out the flow, how this is gonna work, so, um, so I'm guessing, well, so how, how is that gonna work? So we've said, please integrate the LD two thousand three into our, our ordinances, then what happens?
Um, I would just take the notes that I gave you guys, and then I'd see where I can fit it in your ordinance. And then we just have a quick meeting to say, this is where it'd be, does the language look good? And if it does, then the attorney can take a look, or you can have the attorney look at what I did first, and then, uh, go to you and then get the public hearing out of way and tell me.
So you're gonna take the board document, edit that with the underlines and the score-throughs and all that stuff, bring it to us to see?
So I gave you the notes a while ago, I, is what, what you're asking, it, am I taking that as is? Putting it into your ordinance and then giving it to you, or?
That's what I was asking, because, so that we know where it's going.
Right.
And how you're integrating it in, because I imagine, it looked like it was a little bit of a pot of its own, and it kinda got slipped in there, but then I think there were other adjustments in different places in the ordinance that needed to be made, so there weren't conflicts, if I'm right.
Uh, it is.
If I'm remembering right.
Uh, everyone's ordinances are always different. I believe.
True.
I believe it should be something where I can take it and then insert it, it was just a matter of whether you guys wanted to add scattered here and there, or if you wanted a new section just for this one to cover it all, and then I can easily just copy paste it over. Um, and I'm fine doing that.
What would you suggest? I mean, what's other towns, what have other towns been doing?
Um, a lot of towns have just done the copy paste one, and then they sent it off the attorney to confirm.
But putting it in one spot or moving to different places?
Yeah, usually just, yeah, like the additional dwelling unit ones, they just make their own dedicated standards based on what the state language says. Same thing with the affordable housing, um, accessory dwelling units, some already have accessory apartments, so they make some merge of it. Some don't have it, so they just copy paste that.
Okay, and then you're gonna look to see if there are particular sections that conflict with that that need to be adjusted?
I don't think, I think other than.
Or to go language somewhere.
Yeah, I think other than the law of land use tables, I don't think there would really be any issue with that. Definitions are gonna be different, but states' values, your definitions are not one-on-one exact.
Yeah, I know our definitions are really lacking. There's a lot of definitions that should be and that aren't, and that's probably a big piece of it as we go forward, right?
Right, and that's another thing that I'm doing during the revision. If I see something in here that's on your land use table, or something that's referenced with it, uh, I need to make sure you guys have a definition there. And actually, that brings me to something I wanted to bring up, uh, while I was looking at your list, you had here, this is on the other side. You had you had windmills, you had solar panels, solar farms.
You're on page one?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Um, is this something where you need windmills to be specifically spelled out, solar panels to be spelled out, um, and again, with the, the conference I was at today, they were actually just talking about, uh, how a lot of towns, especially rural towns, are gonna start seeing a lot more developers for these renewable services, including battery storage, starting to look out into this area, and everyone should make sure they do have something in writing about those.
What do you mean, those spelled out, like have it on a section?
Yeah, saying what the use is and any standards you wanna have for that, like, uh, solar panels, some towns are trying to say, oh, well, it falls into this category, but, you know, it passed the straight face test, doesn't have it, or they'll just allow something without realizing the harm it could do.
We, we do have sections for each of those things.
Okay.
I think that they're not very complete or comprehensive.
And battery storage is a big deal.
Uh, right, battery storage, we do not, but, I mean, the ones on the list, the communications tower, the grid and the solar farm, we, we, we do have that, I don't think that it's very comprehensive, it doesn't, um, say the process for, um, providing application. It was just sort of done to say what could, it couldn't be there.
Okay.
Without a process of, you know, you must
Do this.
put in application and, and what needs, it didn't really say what needed to be on the application, just that you could have them here and you can't have them there, sort of thing. You, when you look at it, you know what I mean, it's, it's, it's got information, but it's not really
Okay.
completely.
You're just putting an add-on as another paragraph.
Right. Right, like a campsite, you know, whereas windmills really have a whole lot more to them than that.
Okay.
Communication towers is forever double A.
Okay, or section.
Yeah, right, yeah, we're in double letters, can be read.
And just, you know.
Yeah, this, this is why I then go to the under links, so that I can.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's just been laddered forever, so we just kinda like.
No, I get it, I get it.
We don't wanna go through and have to change all the references, so, but those sections are there, they're just not complete or comprehensive, I think is the word. Wouldn't you agree, Jim, as far as that goes?
Well, I think there's a lot of meat in each of those sections, um, for example, communications towers, you know, follow zones, I mean, there's all of those details there. But it's, it was, it was just a, it was just an add-on to our ordinance.
Right.
And I'm sure there's, it could be conflicts and so forth, and we won't ignore it.
Yeah, it doesn't have instruction like the subdivision does, or any of those other things, it's just requirements and stuff, so. Need a plan?
No, I don't even think I really do this that much.
Okay.
Um, so, the first one I'm starting with is the LD two thousand three implementation. Get that in your orders, I think from the last one you had about this, it seemed like you all were fine with the suggestions and how you were describing earlier, you kinda wanted to get it to the legal review, so. I'll send everything out, just to make sure you all are comfortable with it, and then you can have your review of it.
Yeah, I think we made changes and added, um, we added certain details that you had suggested that we have details on.
Okay.
Um, and I think I was out for the final meeting when I came back.
It's been so long, I, I'm gonna have to just take a fresh look at it.
Yeah, I have to look at it.
I'll, I'll, I'll try and go, I'll try and go see what the minutes show me.
Yeah, so.
Okay, and then, so I'll get that going first, so that maybe that could be something that you have, uh, sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and then if that's almost done, then we can probably hit the end once.
Yep.
And then what do you guys want next? Because we had like state items, um, and then items on the list.
What do you think would be most logical next?
Uh, well, once, once I'm done with the LD two thousand three items, and it's just waiting for the legal review and the town approval, uh, that's when I'm just going through a comprehensive overhaul of the ordinance, but once I'm done with the LD two thousand three, I'm also gonna be talking with the different staff members here and select board, get their thoughts of it, and I'm gonna put together something based on everyone that's, I'm gonna put together maybe one or two articles based on the suggestions. Um, or at least maybe a, a long list of what I am going to do, like, I'm not gonna put together an ordinance yet, but if the code enforcement officer says, well, I'd like the process to have this step in there instead, I'll just have a quick pull point, maybe one or two pages saying, this was a suggestion that was made by the CEO, or this was a suggestion made by fire department, you know? And after discussing with you, see if they are things that I already have or shouldn't have. Once I get to that, I'm getting my state items put together, I'm getting regional items put together, and then I'd start actually putting together the ordinance.
Okay.
So it, it'll take some time before you see a draft.
Right, you're talking about the next time we meet that you'd have a work plan pulled together?
Yeah, I'll do, I'll start with the LD two thousand three item, and then the next time I'm here, I would hopefully have a, a work plan for the items I'm going to incorporate into the ordinance. Um, then obviously, if I get something back from the comp plan, uh, from the state about the comprehensive plan, that's gonna take a bit more priority first.
Right.
Because I gotta make sure that gets done first.
Right, so we might be a little while before we can start up. Is there anything that you can think of that we need to do between now and meeting again?
Uh, just keep in mind, whether it's one applicant or just you guys get some inspiration in the middle of the night, like, oh, I need to remember to tell Max that, just keep your notes on all this. And if there's anyone I should keep in mind when interviewing, uh, that would also help a lot.
Okay, so we need to have our additional list from our list in addition to this. If you, with the next meeting, if we have anything.
Yep.
Okay.
And then, uh, when I'm doing my regional look at things with shoreline zoning or anything else, uh, I might just throw the idea out to these to you, and if you wanna, if you have a few minutes out of the planning board meeting, just say, hey, Max is thinking of this. It'd be very nice, but not really necessary.
Yeah, because I mean, our next meeting is like next Tuesday, so it's probably gonna be a little early.
Yeah.
For you to have anything yet, but we could definitely do that. That's a good idea.
Um, how about looking at the, um, Waldboro's, um, definition section?
Yeah, I can send out.
Is that section that shows?
Yeah.
All the definitions?
Yeah, I think that would be, because you can see what, what they have, that may actually make you think of other sections.
Right, I mean, and we've added definitions here and there as we've needed to, but it's not close to being comprehensive enough.
But I think that'll actually
What we have, so.
trip you, you, start you to think that, oh, we should add that, and this is where it should go, if you see other definitions.
Right, I mean, I think this is gonna be a pretty big process, really. Do you have any sort of idea, timeframe, if we don't even count the comp plan, coming back on that kind of stuff, what do you think this is gonna take?
Um. Usually takes about maybe a year, but it always depends on the nights when, where we're doing this.
Right, oh, and that comes, I guess, to meeting frequency, um, for meetings, do you know the next time you'd be able to meet with us, does it make sense time-wise, when does it make sense to do that, how long do you need to have information?
Um, LD two thousand three should be, uh, very quick to actually get done, if I'm just going based on the previous notes. I, I'm just trying to think, um. I don't. And I doubt you wanna meet in December.
We'll be meeting in December anyway.
Okay, well, especially in December, I know. Um, when do you, it's the?
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday? Okay, um. I, I mean, I could certainly come to the meeting in December to go over two thousand three items again, if you need to do that, um. But other than that, I, I probably will take the time between now and then to do LD two thousand three updates, and then starting to meet with people at the town office side about their ordinance recommendations.
Okay, so you think you're looking more timeframe to get that sort of lined up before you're ready with our plan in like January?
Yeah, I probably, I can, uh, check in with you guys in January to just say, this is what I've done so far, this is the LD two thousand three changes, and hopefully we'll have heard from the state at that point on the comp plan.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
The state gives me a thumbs up on the comp plan, that you guys are ready for June vote, then, eh, it's great.
So you're not looking at meeting again right now, which is fun. Um, and I think you've gotta work through Carly, the clerk, to set up meeting and that sort of thing, right, Christine?
Um, meetings with the planning board?
Yes.
Yes.
So you can check with Carly about when to run a meeting, should reach out to us and find out when is this time? I mean, evenings is always good, all of us work, um, day of the week. I don't know, you guys have a preference, is, Tuesday is good, it's just a different Tuesday?
It's fine, it's fine.
I mean, I think we run the risk of doing it on a planning, regular planning board meeting night, if we have a bunch of applicants, you don't wanna hang around for that. I mean, if we, sometimes we've done it earlier, but I think earlier than six is tough for us, right?
Well, I was also just mentioning earlier before this, uh, I actually have a flipping pass, so I'm very close by.
Oh, you're close, ooh.
Yeah, so I can easily be here, if you have an applicant and you don't want me to be here for the application, I can easily show up like six thirty, six forty-five, if you want, and then you might be done at that point.
Maybe that's an option, it's just we're never sure how long we're gonna be.
I know.
I mean, it could be, you know, we start at six, it could be six forty-five, it could be eight, ten, we never really know. It's crazy that way.
Well.
So we could, we could do that, appreciate that option, um, but what do you guys think as far as trying to do it on a night that we have a regular?
I think it's better to just do it a different night, that way like you can play in your, what you're named in.
Yeah, that we have.
That way you don't come and, yeah.
I think it was time to actually. I think it's just time to actually-
Prepare specifically for that one.
Talk about it, instead of looking at the count, it's very much going, and then it's almost 6:45, so.
That's fair.
Do you anticipate monthly meetings with you?
No, not, not now. Uh, I think-
Starting in like, January or something?
Once I actually have an ordinance to start going through with you, then yeah, that would be more of a monthly thing. But I don't anticipate that really happening until, maybe late spring, and I'm being very-
Okay, okay.
Optimistic by that time.
How, you're talking about after LD 2003 is set?
Yeah, I get LD 2003 set, I wanna get the interviews going. But then, when January happens, hopefully we will hear about comp plan, and LD. Best case scenario, I don't have to do too many changes with the comp plan, then I can start working on the ordinance, and actually put together something a bit more comprehensive by that time.
So we'll meet sometime in January, look over what you have for 2000, LD 2003?
Yep.
Send it off to the lawyer, and that should be ready for the meeting, the town meeting.
Well, maybe look at the definitions too, I mean, there's, there's sections that we can, if we think we're gonna have the comp plan completed in January, potentially presented in April, to the town, as much as we can add to that agenda.
Well, I approve of, I can try and have LD 2003 done for your December meeting, if you would like. Just in case you need it, if there's no application for December, I can try and have that done by then. And then you can get it off a lot sooner, and then, it might be comprehensive by that time at that point.
Would, would we as a board wanna sit and review and discuss the LD 2003 with Max? Or are you proposing that we, you send it through Carly to us, and we just review it and decide on the meeting?
Well, I think it's important to be very, very active.
Yeah, so you-
I can be here for December if that's needed. Let me try and get LD 2003 done first, if I can get by a deadline, and if you don't have any applicants in December, then we can do a December meeting. If you have an applicant, then we can do this in January, which is the season.
So, regular meetings on the talks?
Yep, I can get that.
Tuesday.
Yeah, so we could at least look at it, and then, watch them on a different night, or something like that. Okay, alright, anyone have anything else? Nice, are you happy, all set?
All set.
Motion to adjourn.
Is that there, second?
Um, I think Jerry said it first, Jerry second, uh.
Everyone's quick to draw, and, uh-